Next up, environmental sustainability. Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees. This is really our main attraction for the evening, and I appreciate your patience. It is an exciting time to speak to one of the fundamental priorities beyond our critical mission, of course, of teaching and learning and educating in our community. The Board has, for some time, held a strong commitment to environmental sustainability and to the planet. I will just give a few opening remarks, and then I know that President Johnson is prepared, and all of the trustees have been briefed, and we do have a little thinking document, but mostly this evening is about your discussion. Members of my team are standing by, and I, and we will take careful notes about your study session discussion so that we can support this work moving forward. We know that it's time to renew our commitment in the way that we are living our value in the Ann Arbor Public Schools and in the Ann Arbor community of a deep commitment to strong environmental stewardship and sustainability. And we're using a tool that we've just very bluntly named, an action plan. But I want to share the idea of the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, trustees, has come from your stated commitment to the environment. And we will, I want to note, be using action plans. I just want to pause on that idea for a moment. We have been deep in crisis and emergency planning, trustees, as you well know, for over a year. That involves members of our team and all of our Ann Arbor Public Schools team, and you all working very long days. And most of those days have been caught up completely with the COVID-related changes and requirements and really crisis management. So as a way of renewing and restoring, and perhaps someone used that word of a reset, we will be bringing forward a number of action plans. They're like, I don't know if it's the right word, but like quick start options for just resetting our pace to the work post-COVID. So I want to just mention tonight so that our community is aware that the Board, the trustees, have been discussing with me a number of areas. None of these areas are a surprise to you all because they're the fundamental rocks of our work. But areas such as our Equity Strategic Plan, our 2019 Capital Bond, our Special Education Improvement and Enhancements, our Social Emotional Learning and Supports coming through COVID, and then perhaps even a district COVID emergent set of priorities. So we're looking at a number of action plans over the coming months. Our Community Engagement Sessions and Thought Exchange post-Spring Break will really ask the question, what are our priorities as we emerge from COVID? And we will use community engagement, feedback from our stakeholders, of course, to inform these action plans as we go. And yet, at this study session, the last study session prior to Earth Day 2021, we wanted to just call out this idea of an environmental action plan. We're describing three legs of the stool this evening. The trustees will discuss and either support or change or do something else. But first, the establishment of an AAPS Environmental Sustainability Task Force, the development of a suite of environmental sustainability policies. It was back in 2018 that our trustees passed Policy 8000, but we have had the goal to really analyze policies across the country and make sure that our suite of Series 8000 was the best anywhere. And then thirdly, we continue to look at, with our environmental educator team, how we can enhance the environmental education programming. So really, tonight is about that first leg of the stool, the Environmental Sustainability Task Force. Trustees, in the thinking document, I've also included the part of our Board policy that addresses the nature of a task force, that it's a group that the Board assigns to an urgent topic, and you can see those notes in our, you can see those notes in our, in our notes that are attached this evening. I do want to highlight a little bit of what the Board has done, and then we'll share, President Johnson will just hand off to you. But we have not waited for this action plan. We have been about the business of working diligently to improve our commitment and to live our commitment to environmental sustainability, following the passing of those policies in 2018. Of course, in 2019, we passed the Capital Bond, a cornerstone of that bond program. In addition to teaching and learning in our critical mission, was a commitment to the environment. Trustees, just a running set of highlights, you'll recognize these. We've planted more than 500 native hardwood trees on our properties. We've enhanced our natural play areas, constructed our first fully-natural playground at Ann Arbor Open. We've enhanced outdoor learning classrooms and school gardens across many of our schools. We have one of the best school garden programs in the country. We added last year with a grant from Eagle for electric buses, and we're one of just very few districts that are a part of a pilot and research project to improve the viability of electric buses for transportation. We've worked on energy efficiency. One of our speakers this evening spoke to our commitment to LED lighting updates and to retro commissioning of our mechanical systems. We've installed solar energy. We're in the midst of that project, but every year, the energy that we're already saving will offset carbon emissions equivalent to more than 6,000 miles driven by cars or some 3 million pounds of coal burned, or the equivalent of 550 homes of annual electric usage. We've worked on stormwater management with major projects at Pioneer, Scarlet, Mitchell, and Carpenter. We are in the midst, thanks to the support of some grant monies, of redesigning and recommitting to our recycling program. We have enhanced that Freeman Environmental Education Center and updated two teaching labs there. And so the work has been going on, and yet there's a desire from across the Board and across the community to document our plan and to create this action plan that would allow us to get out of the gate with a renewed and restored and revitalized commitment to the environment. So, President Johnson, I know that our task this evening is really to focus in on the task force, and so I'll hand it off to you, but it was my great pleasure to just overview that the Board has had this commitment. We've done lots of work, but we're coming to the table tonight to think about a particular focus for this next 21, 22 school year. President Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. I actually, you stole some of my thunder.
Oh, no!
It's all good. You're absolutely right. Really, kind of the focus of tonight is to really examine this Sustainability Task Force. And I do want to remind trustees and the public that, given that this is a study session, we won't be making any decisions tonight. The goal of this discussion is to make sure that we were all kind of on the same page in terms of what this Sustainability Task Force should do and the composition of it, et cetera. And so what we, I'm wondering if it would make sense to pull up the charge. Thank you, Mr. Cluley. Let's see. So in the charge, the focus of the Ann Arbor Public Schools Environmental Sustainability Task Force is to advise the Ann Arbor Public School Board of Education on a formal sustainability plan that'll support achieving the goal of environmental sustainability, guide adjustments in operations, and Ann Arbor Public Schools capital improvement planning to ensure we have a strong sustainability plan that can, that will show our commitment to sustainability. Also, it's very important to know that the sustainability plan must support the district's moral imperative and critical mission to deliver high-quality teaching and learning to all students every day. The work group, the working group, will include local climate change and sustainability experts, a professional consultant, and local community members, and the trustees of the Ann Arbor Public Schools Board of Education. Our hope is that the task force will begin work next month in April with some background research to clarify, to clarify really our direction going forward. If you tab down, you'll see three areas that we felt like the task force could focus on, one being conducting an actual energy audit, which would be an inventory and assessment of the Ann Arbor Public Schools' current carbon footprint, bring forward recommendations for phased improvements, including an overview of considerations and potential options to reach the goal of zero, I mean of carbon neutrality in Ann Arbor Public Schools. And three, present those recommendations for a sustainability roadmap that would include potential investments required, timelines, benefits, and anticipated challenges, I'm sorry. And one part that I did skip over is that this task force would be tasked with presenting at least quarterly updates, so formal quarterly updates with the goal to develop and to bring forward that proposed sustainability plan by the spring of 2022. So right now, we'd be looking at a one-year time period or timeframe for this task force to do this very important work, to, you know, make sure that we're, that we have a roadmap. I do think that it's easy for folks to put a flag on the ground and create goals. We are stating that we'd like to have a goal of carbon neutrality. We want to see what that looks like so that we can set that, that, we can chart that path, and this group would be, or this task force would be instrumental in helping us to do that. So trustees, I wanted to open up the floor to hear your feedback on this document. Do we, you know, who do we think would need to be on the task force? Are we directionally accurate here, where we think that these three phases in terms of an audit, a kind of presentation of different options, and then a recommendation is the way to go? Are there any other things that we should be looking at or thinking about? Trustee Gainer.
Thank you. I'm very excited, relieved too, but very excited to get to this point tonight, to get to the formation of a task force. We have so many people in this community who are knowledgeable and who have been advocates and who have a breadth of understanding of what it takes to meet a carbon neutrality goal. I have expressed this often, we're tremendously fortunate to have Emile Lozano as formerly head of facilities and now heading up our bond campaign. I'm just very excited and optimistic about the major projects and new construction that they'll meet the highest standards. I also want to take this point to say that, you know, hopefully the Board, and I think it has in the past and continues to be along with Dr. Swift and the entire administration, is unified in this goal.
Yeah.
It'll make the work so much more productive. I do think the Board has a very important responsibility in leading this effort to make sure we stay on pace and reach out to the, to the best people to do it. So yes, the task force and the three items mentioned, you know, are all good. Everybody's been saying we need an, we need an audit, whether it's, you know, greenhouse gases and beyond, and just assessing the totality of our carbon footprint. Number two, bring forward recommendations for phased improvements, overview of considerations, potential options to reach the goal of carbon neutrality. This is very broadly stated, but I think it's extremely important and perhaps points to the focus that we haven't quite seen yet. We understand infrastructure, but there's much activity that goes on in our schools and around our schools, including transportation and other factors that contribute to the carbon footprint. The Ann Arbor's, I don't remember what it's called, Sustainability Effort Led by, yeah, the A20 Effort Led by Missy Stolz, is, will be a tremendous partner, helpful in helping us combine forces. Of course, with our bond spending, and I would, maybe apart from the University of Michigan, we're the largest single, you know, force in this effort, you know, to do this. So, you know, I very much want to be part of helping with the task force and, you know, again, making sure we have the best people. I know there have been other recommendations that we should consider, including, you know, setting a climate goal, at least aspirationally, I think it's important to show our commitment. I'd also want to entertain the idea of having a sustainable, I'm sorry, a sustainability officer, whatever we call the person, to help pull everything together and work on those areas that aren't as concrete and specific. You know, it certainly would complement what Mr. Lozano does, but it goes beyond it. So those are my initial thoughts.
Thanks, Trustee Gainer. Anyone else? Trustee Carrero.
Yeah, I just had a, looking over the language of the charge, you know, one thing, one issue I do see in the way the language is written is very much, normally when we ask someone to create a plan, usually that it's aligned with some kind of vision that we have. And so that's somewhat what I see a little bit missing in the language of it. I understand that the spirit of the task force would be to help create and construct that vision, but I think it's a little, it's a little tricky when you say, come up with this plan, but there is no vision to align it to. So I think it must be a little bit more present in the language of that task for, that they themselves are actually coming up with the vision and the plan simultaneously, because I know a lot of people have different ideas on what sustainability means and what are the moving pieces of that. And I think the call that we had with the many environmental groups bared that out a little bit. I think mostly, most people are in agreement about some of the things that we have to move forward, but there will be some differentiation there about where the efforts would go forward first the most. And I think having a vision, an overall vision, sort of helps that move forward rather than get stuck in gear, if you will.
Thanks, Trustee Carrero.
And if I could add one more thing about, a little clarification about the professional person on there, I can't, a professional consultant, is that the same language as a Sustainability Task Force? I'm not sure that anyone knows the answer. Is that the same thing as a, an officer that we're going to employ, or is that not? I'm just curious about what our thinking was and who crafted the language.
Yeah, the idea of the consultant really comes out of the fact that we're, you know, we have people that are currently employed by the district who are working on the day-to-day. And periodically, when we want to go and create this type of effort, we'll bring someone else in that can, that can, you know, carry a little bit more of the administrative and some of that expertise for that task force without pulling on the current folks that are, that are overly, overly stretched at this point in many cases. So that would be my answer. I don't know if, Dr. Swift, if you wanted to add anything.
I appreciate that. I think part of that thinking also was the greenhouse gas inventory, the full picture of where we currently are in the district, that that would be a specialty type of consultant that you would engage to help complete that work for the task force. So I don't know if that's helpful at all. I would point out-
Yeah, you know, it's helpful, it's helpful, but you know, but I'm thinking, wouldn't that be somewhat in line with what the task force would decide? Isn't that what we have a task force for, to make the plan for who we would consult to do that, or if that was a good idea? So that's where I get a little bit stumbled between what the task force plan, what plan they're supposed to come up with if they don't quite have the vision of what we want them to do or are asking them to do. So they're simultaneously coming up with the plan and the vision, and I think everybody could see a little bit of problem with that.
I hear you on that. I will point out that I can do it at the Board's request and probably should have done it, but a good start on the vision is really the work that was done in the Policy 8000. It isn't to the level of detail that you're describing, Trustee Harrow, I'm not saying that, but the Ann Arbor Public Schools recognizes that climate change is real, those statements. The trustees back in 2018 spent a lot of discussion and time kind of drafting those pieces. So perhaps that would, we will do whatever the Board thinks is best, but to me, that would be the closest to a written-down vision that we've had so far. I don't want to speak for the Board, but that's my observation.
Yeah, Trustee Bascot.
Well, my questions are kind of along the line as the trustee regarding vision. This, what are we trying to do here, I guess? I'm trying to figure out. So yeah, we had crafted this policy, which I guess we last adopted in 2018, but I don't think we've had a discussion about it since. And I don't know where people stand on this, and I'll be very candid, I haven't seen a definition lately of what we're talking about, sustainability. I mean, I've heard the buzz phrase, carbon neutral, but what are we trying to do? Is it to, again, refine our policies, to then give us a guide, if you will, as the trustee said, for the task force to work on or to follow? Or is it creating a task force to make a recommendation? I'm a little confused. What is the end goal here? Because I guess we, I feel like we've missed a step somewhere, and maybe that happened, the discussion happened in another committee, a bond committee or whatever. So that's my first question, is what are we trying to do in terms of an outcome? But also, do we have a commitment here with the people serving on the Board, what we're talking about? Because again, in 2018 is one thing, but a lot has happened, believe it or not, in the last two years, and we have the opportunity to do something, but I'm not quite sure what that something is. So that's one set of questions I have. The second set is, what is the reporting structure of this task force? How were they structured, if you will, hate to use the same word twice, but to come, are they, to make a set of recommendations, to come to the Board, to be adopted, to, and who is going to be the staff support? We talked about hiring consultants, but I'm not quite sure what a consultant can do versus the resources and the skill sets that we already have on staff. Then let's talk about funding. Will, whatever the budget for this committee, is this an allowable expense out of the bond work? I'm not quite sure. So help me here. I guess I'm just plain confused of what you all want to do. Thank you, trustees, if you can add clarity.
Yeah, Trustee Lazarus.
Nice to have you here. To, I think, my understanding of the, of the goal, and this is the reason why a task force is, I support the thought of having a task force put in this, because we all agree that we want to, climate change is real, we need to lower our greenhouse gases, and our ultimate goal is to be at zero, net zero. So the question is, is, how do we get there? You know, we can all make aspirational goals, that we want to be there by 2032, 2033, you know, whatever. But the thing is, is that we need to understand that we have a bond, we're going to be doing a lot of construction, a lot of changes, capital improvement investments into our buildings and into our infrastructure. But I think we need to have, the task force have the latitude to actually, one, figure out, do the energy audit, figure out where are we today in our greenhouse gas emissions? And with technology changing every year in this field of sustainability, that how we actually get there, there needs to be a lot of research. That's why I think we need to have and employ an outside consultant that has this type of expertise that can guide us through this process of doing the energy audit, so we're not, you know, kind of blindly walking around trying to figure this out. And the task of, the charge of the task force is to advise the work of the bond and the expenses of the plan, the rollout that we've already laid out and we've adopted back in December, of how the bond would actually roll out, and advise the bond committee and the Board of, these are ways that we, this is where we are, we're at point A, we need to get to point Z, you know, Z, but we can only get to point, you know, M by X date if we do this, this, and this, and this. Now, if technology changes, we may be able to get there sooner, but at least we have a path and a layout of a plan that is advising, from this task force, to advise us how to actually make logical, thoughtful decisions in how we actually roll out the bond and the capital investments that we're doing in these buildings. So they work in tandem with each other. You know, the, we can't have one pushing the other, but we have to work together because we only have, I know it sounds like a lot of money, a billion dollars, but it is a finite amount of money, and we've got 32 buildings that we have to spend this on over a very long period of time. So we have to be very thoughtful of how we mitigate our greenhouse gas emissions, and this, through the task force, in my opinion, that would be the charge that the task force would actually figure out for us through their research, through their understanding of where we are right now, and then work with the bond, work with Emile, work with Jason Bing, work with, every single capital improvement that we make from this point forward needs to take into consideration greenhouse gases. And then, as we're moving forward, that's how we, as a Board, will affect the policies to say, okay, this is a policy that we want to adopt as a Board to move forward to make sure that the next Board that comes on, because we all won't be here in 30 years, that, you know, they'll continue on this process and this legacy of reaching net zero by whatever date. Hopefully, we would have a clear understanding after the years, the task force year of, you know, looking at this and dedicating a lot of time and researching our greenhouse gases, that we would be able to clearly state with a smart goal when we can actually hit net zero by whatever year date, and we're confident to move forward because we're basing our decision and our aspirational goal on data, not on just a wish.
Yeah.
I'd like to be at net zero. I'd like to be at net zero by twenty twenty-two. You know, that would be my goal, but I can't get there. It's just not reasonable. So I'm just, you know, I think that that is the beauty of this task force, that it has that latitude to do the research and to find that data and to make smart and advise the, the bond and the board on how to actually reach a reasonable and sustainable goal of net zero.
Yeah, and I just, I would, I would just add, I think, I think to, to answer um, trustee Baskett's other question about where we get the money. I think if we, if we do believe that this um, the, this uh, task force should have a consultant, then we, we ask Jill and ask Dr. Swift where we get the money to, to, to do this and how to, how to go about it. And I, and I, I'd agree with that, I mean, with, with trustee Lazarus, and this kind of answers, hopefully answers trustee Caro's question. You know, lots of, you know, lots of organizations will say we want to get to zero, net zero carbon for our, for our organizations and they, and, and that, that's, that's the goal. And the question about the vision, um, it's, I think our vision is what, what will it take, you know, show us what it will take to get to zero? And, and you know, what would it take to get to zero at twenty fifty, twenty thirty, what, whatever that is? I don't know if there needs to be additional, additional detail around what that vision is other than our, our goal is to get to net zero. Let's, let's figure out how to get there. So that we, so that we understand, given our resources and constraints or whatever, what that's going to look like. And I think a lot of people, when you ask them, when they, when they, they say that they're going to get to net zero, a lot of organizations and companies don't know how they're going to get there, don't even have the, the furthest idea. And so that would be the goal.
President Johnson, I, Mr. Cluley has up. In addition to the policy, which was the first uh, work that the board did on a vision, I want to show what the vision was that the board approved in the bond. And you might, I don't know if you can make that bigger. Yeah, I knew you could. Thank you. Just real quickly, you can see here, um, it's about learning environments, charting a course for carbon neutrality, creating a culture. Um, and you can see the rest of them there. I don't need to read them aloud. This is on our website in our campaign materials. Again, uh, to trustee Cara Harrow's excellent point, it doesn't I, I believe you all are striking at something, a vision for the district. There certainly has been groundwork done. And, and, and I just want to point out those two sources. And trustees, if you think of other written sources in addition to the policy and the bond commitment, I'm just trying to make sure I've set everything out as to what has been written prior to now and committed to by the board uh, so far. So thank you, President Johnson. I didn't mean to interrupt there.
No problem, trustee Baskett.
So again, I'm trying to put, wrap my head around here, this. So if I understand what you all are proposing, we put this committee together, and I, I do want to get back to understanding the gaps in what you guys who've made this proposal um, are saying that we lack from our current staff. Um, I, I, but, but for the moment, let me see if I can articulate this. So you're asking for a group of people, which would include board members and possibly a consultant and other subject matter experts from the community to come to us to guide the assessment, the status quo, where we are with the status quo. Um, talking to us about any proposed changes that we may have, whether it's in policy or direction in practices. And then help with that set of results, if you will. Help guide the bond work to the construction, reconstruction, whatever we want enhancements that we do. Do I have that right? And, and a simple nod would be fine. Okay, so then my question is, um, is there a timeline here? Because, you know, as, as you guys already said, you know, the bond committee's been working and we've been letting out bids. And so is there a timeline of which we hope this task force will be able to bring us something?
We're, because of COVID, we're six months behind the original timeline, so I expect this would be formed just very quickly.
Well, not the formation that I'm asking about, because obviously, you know, that could be this meeting or next meeting. Or I'm sorry, not this meeting because we're not making a decision. But in terms of the task force, do they have a deadline of when they're going to bring us something of which we can move forward? Any, were there any thoughts there?
I would hope as the chair of the bond committee, I would hope that the task force would be able to, I mean, you know, we would like their report tomorrow because it would help guide the decision, so get moving. No. Um, but I think what was written here is that they would report quarterly and then hopefully have the actual recommendation or advise, so they're advising along the way. Now, if they have some information that they feel that the bond committee needs to know, and it's, they just had a meeting and it's a month later, come on in, let's have the discussion. I think it's a cooperative and very fluid uh, sharing of information. And then in the end, because I think there's a time limit that we can put on a task force, which is a year. So hopefully they can have that target of a year to complete the task. But if it needs to go beyond that, we'll have to make a decision. Or if they get it done sooner, then we make a decision there. We, we, um, we close out the task force.
So how many people, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, trustee Baskett, in addition to the informing the bond work, trustees, I've heard from each of you this desire to inform a carbon neutrality goal. Um, so I just want to offer that up. Um, this is y'all's work. We're sitting here taking notes, but I just have heard that in every conversation with the trustees. So is that also a part of the goal for this group?
I would think so. I mean, that's just my opinion. Um, and again, this is probably as far from any sense of my intelligence, if you will. I need real definitions that a layperson, I mean, you know, I, I follow the, the local climate of, of our community, you know. People throw up the carbon neutrality, sustainability, what does that mean? You know, and, and especially in terms of what we do, because our mission is education. And whereas I, I don't want to be used as a pawn for someone else's political agenda and, and sacrificing our, our students' quality of education to make somebody else feel good. And, and I know I'll take a lot of hits on that, but I'm going to be very clear. Our goal is education and offering the best quality. I don't want to be sacrificing any of that because it was the thing to do. And then ten years later, we'll say, oops, well, we went left because this group, and I want to talk a little bit about the composition of the group, said we should do this. So when, well, I, I'd like to know about the selection of the members, because this could be a very influential committee, if your task force, if you will. Um, I'm hoping that we will, whoever you guys decide, and I'm not quite sure who this group is, if it's coming, if it's a subset of the bond committee or not. But I want to see educators and in terms of people who've educated around this environment, if you will, and I'm not sure if I'm articulating that right. But I know when we looked at developing skyline, we had a sense of what we wanted. So we went to those places or brought in those experts to say, what does it mean to have a school with a magnet component? With small learning uh, communities, et cetera, et cetera. And so we were exposed to, okay, this is how other people did it. Thank you very much. And is this, this is makes sense for Ann Arbor. So around this carbon neutrality, this sustainability, whatever. Um, I'd hope to see, you know, you guys, the committee, the task force to have at least explored what that looks like in other cities. Because again, somebody else has done this. And I'm sure, I know when we looked at proposed designs, when we were looking at the, the bond, um, there are communities who must have done this before, because we kind of thought, okay, that's really cool, you know, they've done this because of that. So, um, speak to me, please, about how the committee members will be, or task force members will be selected, who will select them? It sounds like it's a service of, expected service of at least one year. Um, et cetera, et cetera. So who's going to be on this group? How big is this group, et cetera?
So, so if I can just jump in, one, I totally agree. We have to, we need to define what all these buzzwords mean for Ann Arbor Public Schools. So that, so that's one huge thing, because you're right, people throw all types of, of, of jargon out and it doesn't mean, and it could mean one thing to one organization, different to, to, to ours. What, what I was thinking is, is just like a, um, an auxiliary committee. Any trustees that are interested in serving could let me know. And then, you know, and then we'll, we'll uh, gauge interest there. I do think tonight, though, uh, you know, I appreciate where, where you talked about wanting educators on, on this, for example. The, the composition of that is up to us as a board, and, and I think this, this discussion is, is really, hopefully, we'll, we'll hear some of the people that we think need to be involved uh, in this, so that, so that whoever the trustees are, and Dr. Swift and her team can, can compose this in the way that the full board would like to see it designed, basically.
Yeah.
Trustee Caro.
I'd just add, one, one thing to follow up on, uh, just a couple of things that trustee Lazarus said also is. So I liked your analogy of, you know, we want to get to A to Z. I think in the scenario is that, you know, the way that the language sits and what we are asking that task force to do is what happens when they come back to us and say, we can only get to letter Q? You know what I mean? And, and so in our mind, our mind is we want to get to Z. And is that going to be a sufficient enough answer or recommendation, say, if they come back to us and say, you know, we can only get to Q? I mean, what, what are we going to say then? Because if that's not aligned with what our vision is, then I guess the task force didn't do their job, but they didn't really know that they were supposed to, with conviction, get to Z as opposed to come up with their best case scenario. So that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at in terms of like giving them the task of coming up with a sustainability plan without necessarily telling them what, what it is we really want. What is it? Do we want to get ninety-nine percent carbon neutrality? Do we want to collect energy and then have a plus gain at the end? So I, I think that part of it is, is all moving parts. So some of these folks on, that we, I, I believe that should be on the committee are some of the folks that were on that same sustainable committee. I don't imagine we, people, it would, the composition would be some of those people in that group. I mean, that's what I would imagine. And so they would be better well-equipped to answer some of those more so than we are, because, you know, although we are advocates for sustainability, we certainly aren't experts in sustainability like some of these people are. So that, that's why I'm saying it, it's a little tricky to tell them that we want them to come up with a plan for us when we don't even really have constructed in our minds what our vision is. And that part, that's the part that gets a little sideways with, with committees in general.
Well, I, I personally don't think that. I think if we, if we said that we wanted to get to zero, and it's only feasible that we get to five. And, and if, if we're using can and can't in the, in the literal sense, if we can't get to zero, I don't think that anyone will say that this, that this group was a failure in, in getting to where we can get to. I mean, you know, I think, I think a lot of, a lot of the, the, the conditions for can or can't are also going to depend on, on resources as well, right? I think, I think it could say, you know, it might, the, the answer could come back as it depends. And that's why the idea was that we would have some different options. Kind of, I mean, I think the bond is, is a great example where, you know, we, we said, hey, if we, if we go to a billion, this is what we can get done. If we're going to do a little bit less, this is what we can get done. If we're going to do less, it's what we can get done. And, and then we were able to look at those suite of options based on the work that had been done to say, okay, this is what we're going after. And the problem now is that we just don't, there isn't enough detail or color around, you know, that, what it, we don't have a roadmap at all or any options at this point to really know how close or far we are away from it and what it would take to get to perfect in this. I mean, if we're thinking, we're thinking zero emissions is perfect. We don't know what it would take to get to perfect. So it would be helpful to know what that looks like. And if we can't get there, then, then we'll, we'll know that too, and we'll actually know where we can get to.
Before, I just want to step in here. I'm sorry, Jeff, but um, I just want to remind people that when we we were on the campaign trail for the bond, we did not say we were going to hit net zero. We said that we are committed to use funds and the bond, the budget that we came up with and how we came up with the budget included sustainable energy um, technology like solar. And, you know, we had air conditioning in all the buildings, so we, we told them that we would put solar on the buildings. So there's, there, and we were looking at geothermal systems. So, because we know we have new buildings to build. So this is a way, we've never promised anybody that we would get to net zero, because we can't promise them that we can, because we don't know how to get to net zero. So like what trustee, uh, President Johnson was saying, is that this task force would be would, is, is charged to determine the, their goal is to try to figure out how to get us to net zero, given everything that we're doing, all the bond work that we're doing, all the natural repairs and retrofits that we do to our buildings over a period of a fifteen to twenty-year construction timeline. How can we get to possibly net zero? If we can't get there within our billion-dollar budget, it's very possible we can't. That we need to know from this, from this task force, if we had whatever, and if technology changed in five years and there's something on the horizon, then maybe we could actually hit net zero. This is the kind of, because sustainability and technology, it's changing every day. I mean, what we can do today is not going to be what we can do five years from now. So it requires experts to understand and to help us foresee and keep on top of this technology to know what's capable, because when we start building and planning a school, it's something that's not going to open for at least two to three years. So there is a lot of planning that goes into it. There's a lot of decision-making that goes into it. But we're planning a year down, two years down the road. And we may know about some technology that's coming down. And we may want to evaluate it and say, is it really worth the investment? What's our return on investment if we do this? Are we on the bleeding edge? Maybe we don't want to be on the bleeding edge, but maybe you want, want to be on the leading edge, because we know a little bit more about it. So I just, I think we're all committed to hitting that net zero. It's just the question is, how do we get there? And that's the kind of questions in the, in the, you know, the information and the data that I think this task force needs to arm the district with, so that we can talk intelligently and make intelligent decisions. I mean, that's what the task force is doing.
Yeah, and I would, and I would add, I mean, I would, I would hope that these folks who are experts in the, in the area, I mean, we keep talking about a billion dollars. I mean, there, there may be other funding sources where now we, we have access to additional funds and that help us to do some things that may not be in our current budget. So there, there, there are a lot of different opportunities or options that might arise. What we need to do is get the right people um, together to start to chart that path and to, and to start taking some positive steps forward on it. And that's, and that's really the, the, the goal, that would be the goal of the task force.
I mean, Emile has clearly laid out that if we wanted to have efficient buildings, sustainable, efficient buildings, we really can't do it with a hundred-year-old building. You know, there's, there's a cost. There's a cost in greenhouse gases. There's a cost in, in retrofitting. There's a cost in, you know, renovations that are higher than what we may want to. We don't want to lose the value of a Burns Park or an Angel. We want to keep those, those legacy buildings, because that's our history. But if we wanted to be a hundred percent carbon neutral and, you know, the most efficient, sustainable building and that we can possibly have, we would need to build from ground zero. Because that's really how you can make sure that you have the best technology in your building. But we're not going to do that. We, we can't do- But we're not going to do that. We, we can't do that. You know, we don't have the budget for that. So there is, there is decisions that have to be made and, and given takes that have to be decided upon through this whole process. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, trustee Gaynor.
Thank you. Um, yeah. Oh, there's obviously some very tough decisions that the board is going to be facing. And, you know, I think we do have to make a goal. Trustee Lazarus talked about our history, but there's also our future. And yes, our, our mission is to educate students, but our mission is also to make sure there's a future for our students. I don't think there's a conflict between these two, these two items. You know, I think we have to keep our attention to both. But I don't, you know, sustain, whether we call it sustainability or carbon neutrality or net zero, this isn't a passing fancy. This is real. And this is something we're, we have to address. You know, and I, I, we're talking, you know, I think we're more in alignment in terms of having a goal toward carbon neutrality. I'm, I'm not, it's not my fault to, to do language and, you know, and that policy, but I think we have to be as strong as possible within the restraints that we do have. You know, we had three options for our bond. And I know I supported the largest bond. And I know other organizations such as the Sierra Club and the Ecology Center supported it with the idea that we were going to use that, that money, that buffer at the top for carbon neutrality goals for sustainability goals. And I think we have that promise to keep too. Yeah. And hopefully, the federal government, you know, as, as news comes out today, that the administration will be funding sustainability, infrastructure items. So, you know, we need to leverage that as much as possible. And yet, you know, also, as, as has been said here, the, the task force can help refine that, but we do have to take leadership on this. We do have to have a vision like trustee Kara Harrow says. But I think we can do that.
Great. Well, I'm, I'm going to take trustee Baskett's question. And then I just want to get a sense for whether anyone's opposed to doing this, to have a, a task force. And if not, then let's, oh, and trustee Kelly, since you've been, you've been quiet throughout. And then, and if not, then we can start talking a little bit about what that composition should be, to look like. So trustee Baskett.
So I, I don't need answers on the composition tonight, but I do want, would appreciate understanding the process. So this is, has come before us, the idea of, of the group, this task force, and you've written the charges, if you will, for the group, is the thought that this task force would work under the guise of the bond committee and would make recommendations to the bond committee, who would then bring it forth to the entire board? Or is it working through a planning committee? Help me understand where the oversight, if you will, for this committee lies.
That just said, did you want to say something? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I would think, I hadn't thought that through. It's obviously reports to the board. We have the ultimate responsibility. As a mechanical procedure, I would, I don't know, I would think the bond committee could have oversight, but I'm open for suggestions for this. We'll have reps from the board on the committee itself, but obviously, that's more responsibility than any one person. There'll be other people from the task force that will report to us.
Well, well, I would, I would actually think that, you know, in, in the, in the verbiage, the, the, or this task force reports to the board on a quarterly basis. So, so being that it reports to the full board, the full board would, would govern this, this, this advisory group or this, this task force. I, I do think when you talk about the way that it would, that it would interface with the bond committee, I could imagine that if the task force finds, you know, discovers some type of information, let's say it's about a specific type of technology that's coming out or, or something that might be of use to the bond committee, they can, you know, submit that to the bond committee in, to, to, to consider as the bond committee is making its, its, its recommendations or evaluating different options, at which time the bond committee would approve anything that came to the board table. And then, and then the board would, would, it would be part of the, of the overall presentation that the board would give. So the board ultimately would have, would have, have oversight of, of this, this task force. The task force goal, the, the task force's primary goal is, is to kind of give us a roadmap, like, like at least the beginnings to a roadmap. That's what they're there for. They're not there to, to, to watch the bond committee or to, or to make decisions throughout. If they, if they find something that's interesting, sure, hand it off, but we're looking for those quarterly reports and we're looking for some options at the end of the year. That, that was my understanding of it.
So what if the bond committee does not agree with the recommendations from the task force?
Yeah. I mean, it, it, it would be up to the bond committee to, to decide because again, the, the task force is really looking at a horizon. You know, they're, they're not, they're not in the, the, the six-month activity of the bond committee. I mean, unless there's something that they feel is going to be detrimental, you know, in six months, that, you know, 30 years from now or whatever, I think that, that, that it would be okay. But I mean, we, we can handle it on a case-by-case basis, but I do think that the idea that, that they share what they know, if they feel like it's going to be useful to the bond committee, to the, I mean, we talked, you talked, you mentioned the planning committee, for example. I mean, if they see something from an educational standpoint that might be, be helpful, maybe they can, they can hand off. But their, their goal is, is strictly to, to come up with that, that roadmap for, for carbon neutrality and anything else that they, that they, they're doing, they're, they're, they're not, we're not bound to what they say. They're not bound to, to, you know.
Yeah, their, their, their focus will be broader than just what comes to finance bonds. So I agree with you. It could come in, you know, their advice, their expertise could come on different pathways.
And what would happen through the energy audit is that there might be something that you find, the task force finds, that we can start saving, you know, lower our mission, gas emissions, greenhouse gas emissions immediately if we just do something differently in our operations. And I don't think we should wait for, you know, a quarterly report or something. I mean, I think that's something that should be possibly saving us whenever we find it and do it immediately if it's possible. Right. And that's to help build out our 8,000 series too. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I just, let me just say the few, and then I'm done with this. I think the process is still fuzzy. And I think that needs to be flushed out more clearly. And now, I mean, it's, everything is doable when everybody are, are friends. But then when there's a dispute and there's no clarity at the beginning, then we got to back up and, you know, that's a mess. But I, I, I am convinced of the need and I would support this going forth. I just advise you all to figure out the process and to figure it out before you start versus trying to do it in the middle. And, you know, I'll let you experts iron it out, but I, I, I see messy, I can see messy very quickly and very easily. But at this point especially, I don't know enough of, I really, I don't feel comfortable enough to try to advise what the process should be. But you've made your case as far as the subset of people who are going to be advising the entire board on whatever we define, neutrality, sustainability. Again, this is not my, my center of expertise. And that's why I'm kind of struggling as to what exactly we're shooting for. But if the, you know, I'm confident that the, I mean, there's use for the bond committee, there's use, the planning committee finding, every committee, it seems, maybe in, maybe even performance, I'm still, again, a little fuzzy, could have value, could gain value from this committee. I would just advise the process is a little murky right now as well as the composition of people. Again, this could be, and, and we haven't talked about how these folks are selected. And I don't need those answers tonight to say, you know, I, I, I see the validity and the value of having this committee, but you all got to work out some of the finer details and come back. And I'm, I'm assuming this was just a proposal for discussion tonight and then we would bless it at another meeting, so to speak. So there'll be another opportunity for you guys to flush out somewhere. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, trustee Baskett. I think that's really an important reminder is the date on here says April, which is six, seven days from now. I mean, that's, that's not a lot of time to have the who, what, where, why, how process in place to, to avoid those potential future conflicts. So I, I, I agree with you that those answers would be good to, to have before we, you know, take any action, which I know we don't do tonight. I, I had, I've been listening to that, trying to synthesize, you know, sort of these different ideas. And the first idea that I want to just touch on is this idea of what our mission is. There's a lot of things we do every day furthering our mission to educate kids that are not environmentally friendly. And because our mission is to educate children and we have to make sacrifices that sometimes are expensive or sometimes wasteful to do that, our ethic is to do it in a sustainable way. I hear that from every one of you, that, that while it's our mission to educate children, I believe that it is a shared ethic to do it in a way that is responsible to those same children for protecting what they will inherit from this earth and this environment. So I want to be clear on the difference between mission and ethic and, and make an assumption that we have a shared ethic around that, which is why we're having this conversation. The second thing that I'm sort of hearing different pieces of, and I'm hoping I can synthesize, is whether we want to have an aspirational goal that we charge this task force to go and tell us how to get there, or whether we task them with gathering the information and then setting a SMART goal base and what comes back. And I almost wonder if that is a semantic difference if we populate the task force with people who are at least as motivated as we are to get to that ultimate aspirational goal. Right? We get to the same end goal if we put the very best, most motivated environmentalists on this task force and tell, and say, bring us back this study, help us figure out what we can get to. They'll find a way to get there. And if these people, if the best of the best can't figure out a way to get there, then maybe we can't get there. Right? So I, I almost wonder if this question of whether it's an aspirational goal that we charge them with, or whether it's a charge of data collection to set a SMART goal is really semantic. I think that maybe the middle ground is our conversation being, are we setting a goal? Are we stating a vision? Are we saying what we hope will happen? And then tasking the, because those can all be legally charged, you know, or, or loaded words, right? We decide what it is. Maybe it's a hope. We hope to become carbon neutral. And therefore, we are tasking this group with a feasibility study. Is that the middle road? That, that we're asking, we're telling them what we want, and then we're, we're asking them to come back with the SMART roadmap. So it's sort of a hybrid, right? I feel like there's still a little confusion maybe manufactured because it might be a semantic question of what it is we're setting out to do. And then the, the fourth thing that I, I think would be very easy to start talking about, but is definitely not our job here because we're asking the task force to do it, is the how. Right? I think trustee Lazarus was very wise when she pointed out the technology is changing fast. It would be very short-sighted of us to make a goal based on what we know this year about environmental sustainability goals or, or carbon goals that, that it, it denies the fact that things are changing so quickly. I also think that there's some infusion around whether this work needs to happen through our decisions onsite or whether it happens through programs like offsets. I don't have clarity yet on what it truly means to be carbon neutral. So for example, I can tell people that my car is carbon neutral because even though I'm putting emissions into the environment every time I drive to the grocery store, I've paid for carbon offsets. So somewhere in the world, somebody's using my money to engage in an activity that either removes carbon from the environment or is doing some sort of sustainable activity to, you know, reduce carbon somewhere else so that I'm neutral. But I'm not. I'm spewing carbon every time I drive. So what does that mean for us? Are we actually expecting the task force to come back with buildings that don't pollute? Or are we asking the task force to come back with a bigger vision of what carbon neutrality means? Is it maybe not at, you know, at, at one of our old buildings, but it, we make up for it somewhere else? I don't know. And I don't think we have the, the skills or, or the tools here to decide that, but it's what I want from the task force. So that's, I think that's part of our charge that we're asking them to do is present their recommendations and, and, and give those things to us. And, and so I, you know, I hope those answers come. But I guess to wrap it all up with those questions that I still have in mind, I'm curious, we're not taking action tonight, but what are we hoping to leave here with? Are we hoping to leave here with a, a goal, hope, vision? Are we hoping to leave here with a charge? What is it that, what is our end point for tonight?
So I'll, I'll just speak for me. What, what I would like is a general understanding that the board as a whole supports the idea of having a task force, number one. Number two, I'd like trustees to know enough about what we know right now to decide whether or not they'd like to serve on that task force. And then number three, I'd like to have a decent idea about who we think are the right people to include on a task force that could bring additional information to us that would allow us to better understand all of those questions that several folks tonight are asking. One of the reasons why we are kind of fuzzy about this and don't really know what, what we want outside of doing the best thing for the environment. I mean, if you want to even take, take it out of, you know, take all jargon out of it, you know, we, we want to have the least negative impact on the environment possible, right? Even if that's the goal, what that looks like is going to have to be further defined. And we don't have that background to do it. So knowing who will help us to, to understand that is really important. So those are the, those are the three things that, that I would like. The, to, you know, to know who's interested, to have an idea of who would be, you know, who would be optimal to, to have on that, on that task force. And then also that, that we're, we're in general agreement that the task force is a good idea.
Can we start at the end there and, and maybe ask for a head nod that it's a good idea? Because if we don't have that, we don't need to do the other ones.
Right.
Before we do that, I, I would like to hear what Mr. Lotzner has to say on, on our discussion.
Well, I'll, I'll give it, I'll give a heads up, thumbs up, that I think it's a great idea. And I, I really appreciate this conversation and the board's commitment to environmental sustainability. It makes my job a lot easier. I've been doing this work for 30 years around energy efficiency, renewable energy, carbon reduction. And usually, it's, it's, most of the work is convincing the decision-makers that it's important to care about these things. And it's really refreshing and, and exciting professionally to be in an environment where the, the decision-makers are already on board and they're just looking for the best way to get to, to whatever the goal might be. I, I, a couple of thoughts. I think a greenhouse gas inventory is a great idea. And I think an expansive one would be excellent in our case. A lot of people focus on energy as the main component of a greenhouse gas inventory, i.e. building energy. But we have a lot of other activities that the district engages in that contribute to our carbon footprint. It would be really nice to see included in that. Things like cutting the grass. The food that we serve in our cafeterias has a carbon footprint attached to it. In one of my previous engagements, we went to a Meatless Monday paradigm in the, in the cafeterias, recognizing that the environmental footprint of a hamburger is about five times to 10 times the environmental footprint of a bean burrito, which is what we switch to on Mondays primarily. So that inventory, if we look at everything that the district does, I think that'll inform a lot of our decisions beyond, yes, it will, you know, inform how we spend our bond dollars, but there's also all of this other stuff that we're doing. We're buying textbooks, we're, we're generating. We're buying textbooks, we're, we're generating trash, you know, we're, we're buying food, we're, teachers are driving from around different places to get here, we're busing kids. So all of those things inform our carbon footprint, and it's more than just the building. So I, I encourage the board to think broadly about what other contributing factors to our, our entire carbon footprint. And the other piece that, you know, sets us apart from other institutions that we see setting these kinds of goals, municipalities and other places, you know, my best estimate, and speaking with Missy at the city, and, you know, the school district probably contributes 1% to 2% of the greenhouse gases to our local community. So we're on that order of magnitude of about 1% to 2% of the entire community's carbon footprint operating as our, our school district. But we have 75% of the youth in our school buildings, hundreds of days every year. And they're, they all have a carbon footprint that they're, they're setting out, you know, with their little feet right now, and their feet are going to get bigger, or they're going to stay little as they move into the world. So, you know, if we're really concerned about climate change and making a difference here, one of our biggest leverage points as, as a school district is the youth and the opportunity to educate them about the importance of these issues. So I would encourage us to keep that in, in front and center as well as, that's something that, you know, the city doesn't have access to, you know, 75% of our young people, hundreds of hours, you know, a year, and we have that opportunity. So thank you, trustee Cara Harrow. I was kind of really chomping here writing my notes. So I appreciate the opportunity to share a couple of thoughts.
Good catch, trustee Cara Harrow.
Thank you. I was, I was going to ask as well with the caveat of is it fair to you or fair to us? But, um, thank you for jumping in. That's great.
Yep. Trustee Cara, you had your hand up. Did you have another comment or question?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Dupree. I stumble over trustee Dupree because it rhymes. I'm like trustee degree. But I'm sorry.
Okay, so I guess that was actually a good segue into the question I was having this whole time as far as like the composition of the task force. I noticed that in the chart, it says that one of the things that we prioritize is environmental sustainability, education, and preparing present and future generations to become thoughtful stewards of the environment, developing student leaders. So will this task force actually be considered as a learning opportunity when we engage in students to help us learn more about our carbon footprint in the community and engaging other youth groups that has really been instrumental in some of the activism work that has been going on for the past couple of summers?
I, I think that it can, if that's what we want as a board. I think that's a, that's a great, a great option. I mean, several of us have talked with students in the Sunrise group. So I think that's a good, that's actually a good catch. So, so, which is a great segue. So I know that we, we talked about specialists in, in, in general terms. We've talked about students being on this, on this task force. And then also trustees and the consultant possibly, are there other folks who we think?
President Johnson, I would, I would just interject. I appreciate trustee Dupree's raising the idea of students. On that similar note, our environmental educators have long been champions of this work. I'm not trying to speak for them by any means, because I know they're very busy people, but my suspicion is that they or other educators like them would be interested if I would just offer that.
Yep. And I did add that, that as a note, because, because trustee Baskett mentioned educators earlier as well. So I had that down. Trustee Gainer?
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, we may want to talk about scope or how large it is, but there's some people, a couple of people I could think who would be naturals. Some Dan Ezekiel, one of these educators and environmental educators for the district, I know would be interested. Mike Garfield of the Ecology Center could offer a lot.
I will also throw out Elijah's name from Sunrise, who was on a few of the calls, and also Lauren Sargent, who is a worker with 350, Washington 350. And yeah, they, these are all folks who are on that same call of sustainability and who have worked with sustainability pretty much for, for their time.
So, so what about, at what, well, there's, there's, this is really kind of a strong list right now. I'm wondering about, one, like project managers, like who keeps this thing on task? And then the other is any, anyone with, that handles finances in any way? Thoughts about that? Or is there a different way that, that those folks would interface, might interface with this task force?
I believe that there will be part of this mission, depending on how you all nail down the vision, which I appreciate your discussing of that this evening. There will be some components of this that can be funded through bond money, but not all of what you've talked about tonight can be funded that way. So that is the beauty of a consultant, is that you can contract for particular parts of this. So Emile and Jill and I have had those conversations to kind of prepare for this next step that we could support that way.
I would certainly ask you, Dr. Swift and Mr. Lozano, for suggestions. I know Ms. Lozano especially has met with hundreds of people, relevant people. So I'd certainly be willing to listen to suggestions.
May I make a suggestion? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Mr. Lozano, I see. Well, I mean, these, I think there's an opportunity to, now that it looks like there is no strong opposition from anyone on the board, the opportunity for whoever to huddle around and, and come up with a, if not people, categories or center of expertise, if you will, I think, you know, just offhand, I think someone from construction and someone that we've kind of consulted to help us with the construction should be part of this group. But I'll defer to, again, Mr. Lozano and trustee Lazarus, and it looks like trustee Gainer have a real vested interest in that, them coming up with a proposed list and bringing it back to us. Again, I don't need this, you know, specific people per se to support this. Obviously, I've already committed to supporting this, just a general idea. And again, I just want to manage expectations. I don't want anyone to get on this committee and think they're going to tell the board how to do this. Advised is one thing, but understanding since we are responsible, we have the fiduciary responsibility in answering to the community who are supporting this, and we're elected by them, again, just to manage expectations on, you know, the, the reporting process. So, I mean, that's my recommendation. We don't have to sit here for another hour and hash out, you know, two of these and six of these and three of them, and, you know, like, just a thought.
Thanks. Mr. Lozano?
Thank you, President Johnson. I was just going to add, it would, it would, might be a good consideration for some other institutional reps from the university, the city, and possibly the county.
Got it. And, and I think, Dr. Swift, you're taking notes on this, right? Then I can put my pen down. Yeah, and I, and I do, and I do think that, I do think that it, it may, you know, there could, there could easily be kind of a task force, and then they could reach out to these other resources as needed to. I mean, that, that, all of these folks wouldn't have to be at every meeting, et cetera. But, but I do, you know, I think that we, we have a decent list if, if, if no one else has anything to add. And then what I would, what I would propose is that trustees who are interested, email me to let, to let me know that you're interested. And then I guess, depending on who those folks are, we, we would have to narrow down kind of, to trustee Baskett's point, you know, that the process, you know, what that's going to look like, how we, how we, we move forward. But, but once we're, once we know that, then, then we could bring that back to the full board to authorize the task force and then, and then to kind of move forward. That's what I, what I would, what I would propose as next steps. Does anyone have any different ideas or thoughts about that?
I have no different thoughts or ideas, but in lieu of email, I will say that I'm interested in serving on the task force.
Okay, well, I want to give, I want to give trustees an opportunity to think about it, too. So if anyone, if it comes up, thank you, trustee Cara Harrow. All right. Okay. Any other comments, questions, final thoughts before we move on? All right.
I just really appreciate the trustees and your willingness to work with the draft and clarify some thinking. My team and I will incorporate these notes into the draft that we have, if that sounds all right, and we'll send it back to the entire board. Does that sound okay? And then we'll stand by for next steps. But very, very exciting night. It feels like a significant step that I know the board has been committed to, but we just had needed to get to the place where we could do this. So.
No, absolutely. And I'll just say, you know, I, I agree. I think this was a, was a good conversation. At, in your opening, Dr. Swift, you mentioned some of the other topics, such, such as equity, such as special education, et cetera. And, and I look forward to having, you know, some other study sessions very similarly about those topics. But thank you, trustees, for your, your thoughtful comments and, and your patience and diligent work tonight. So thanks a lot.